So first thing you got is the subdivision application, changing that out a little bit. So when we look at the subdivision regulations, it calls for an application for sketch plan, application for preliminary and an application for final. We've never, we've always just accepted the one application and worked it through that process. So we'll at least update the application. And until you really use it, you may, that's when you'll find out all your issues in it. There's a ton of redundancy, there's a lot of contradictions in it as well, but that's what's in the subdivision regs. So instead of changing the subdivision regs, we at least want to get some applications out there, so.
But that's what I found that can read through it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry for not being more, whatever. My mind's been on other stuff, but there's so much duplication that it's really ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah. Which some of it is to protect the town and the applicant, a lot of it is for both. But, you know, we've got to provide a receipt within three days of him bringing, somebody bringing something in on a Thursday, that really just gives us Friday to do something to make sure they've got a receipt and give it back to them. And the other things as we move forward is, you know, when we look at zoning articles is the publications and we look at state law for how we publicize. And it all references the newspaper, the newspaper, the newspaper. And they're getting fewer and fewer and farther between to publish in a newspaper and it's getting more and more expensive and less and less people are reading them. So when we have that 10-day window to, somebody's here and we've got to get it in the newspaper, 10 days prior to the next meeting, really it's, it's a month. It's a month cycle versus the 10 or putting it on the town website or something like that.
Is that, is that state law or is that?
That's what I've got to look at a little bit more to see what's changed in.
Because if we, if it's just a matter, if it's just a matter of our ordinances or our regulations, I mean, we can, we can change the definition.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless it's dictated by the state.
Exactly, yeah. So that's something I look at.
The same with the notification, I mean, can we change the notification to three business days with the qualification that a business day is our working day?
Exactly, yeah, which would give us Friday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Now we've got some time anyways to get this stuff out. But in one aspect, it's good to have a sketch plan application, preliminary application and a final. Would really be clear on where we're at and where we're going. Our fee schedule is set up every time we have an application, there's a fee. A fee for it and a per-lot fee. So that we may want to address too as well because it's going to be three times more than what we anticipated it to be.
Is the fee schedule, who approves?
Yep, so we can change that fairly easy and clean that up a little bit. But of course, we're right in the midst of a major subdivision now. So I'm not thinking, we want to touch any of the subdivision regs, but the application we should at least clean up. So it'll be more compliance with that. Otherwise they'll just give us the same application, which really doesn't have much information on it, three times.
If we change, well, if we change the subdivision regs, wouldn't it not apply to the one that we have in the pipeline?
Common sense would say that, yeah, yeah.
But my problem with that, Wesley, it's, it's kind of like when we started having in town, if somebody had made an application to open a bar in town and I got a thing and I rushed it through, got it through.
Petition.
Petition before I got his license. It would look as, which would may partly would be directed at that person or that business.
I see that point.
I don't really think, so I, I think the application or any of the subdivision regs that we do change would have to be from here forward and not so much. We can't, we shouldn't be changing our subdivision regs because let's say I don't like what he's doing.
No, 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 that's not what I mean. What I'm saying is, you know, anything that we change now would affect the one that's where we have the application. But we've learned some things.
Oh, yes.
Because of that, so, and things that we know that we need to address.
Cause next week another person.
Could be, and then we don't.
We do have another subdivision application and they wanted, and I said, let me get the application cleaned up and fixed and let me get you a regular one versus the one you've got.
Is that the one on Hungry Point?
No, that's on Buzzard Road as well, really Lakeside probably. It's just a small one, lot to lot thing.
But I mean, it's, my concern is that if we wait until the one we have is over, we could have how many more coming in or could come in that we don't address the issues that we think that we should address and then we'll never get there.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, what's good with the subdivision regs is we can change that at our own level. We don't need to go to town meetings, so we're not forced to, like the zoning ordinances. We need to have that working now to be ready for January, to be ready for June. If we dragged our feet and we just got too much going on, that's what the workshops are for, the subdivision would be last on our list. There was some discussion at the last meeting that maybe the Martell subdivision is on second and fourth Thursdays and regular planning board at first and third. Just to leave, so the board can get their regular business done too without spending three, four hours on the regular nights.
But I mean, can we do that on a regular basis anyway, even before R.A. was there?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, so I mean, it's, I don't see, I don't see that, personally I don't see that being an issue. I mean, I know that when we come in for a meeting, I could be here until 10 o'clock.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, that's, it is what it is. And adding two more meetings a month really isn't, isn't changing anything except we're just not here as late, we're still working the same amount of time.
When, when you start going to the 10/11 and we used to do that all the time back in '05, '06, either everything's a no or everything's a yes. I just want to get out of here, let's deny this and say no, 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 or yes, yes, yes. It seems that the caring levels kind of stops after nine, 9:30, 10 o'clock definitely. So some of the Eagles trace, we were teetering midnight on a few of those, so. But just something to consider and obviously we need some more chairs built before we make any decisions, so.
I just, I mean, it's, you know, I just feel that.
Come out and spend the four hours.
Spend the four, yeah. I mean, they, they, I mean, it's, you're also looking at the board members having to make a commitment to coming every week rather than every other. And then that's going to perhaps mean some people might not be able to make it because of other commitments. And I know that that could possibly happen with me where I have other things. I mean, I take, I take off from work now on Thursdays to be here and me having to take off every Thursday could pose a problem.
I see this more.
No, one of my concerns, Ken, Ben, since I've been on the board, is the time factor and how long it takes when somebody comes in front of us before it gets resolved. You know, I mean, I mean, some like history, you know, just for, not something like the subdivision thing, wedding bonds or gravel pits or.
And most of it is getting the applicant for a completed application. That we've got a good stormwater plan, we've got a good parking plan, we've got things laid out which, you know, we go through during TRC meetings to make sure everything's on the plan, but sometimes they still want to use napkin drawings and spend as little as possible on the engineering. And that's just the hardest thing to get through, a lot of them. And most times they won't even make it to me until they've got it, you know, off the napkin drawings and onto paper. But, and I fully understand, I don't want to spend a ton of money on an engineered plan that the board may not be like. You know, they may want, may not want another wedding bond in town after the fourth one, but that's not our preview.
We need to do our due diligence also, no matter how long it takes.
No, no, I appreciate that. It's just looking at it from the outside. I'll use building plans thing, for example.
The gravel pit or the subdivision.
Gravel pit.
Yeah.
I mean, that must be at least two months after.
Yeah, maybe, tops, yeah. But that's a, that's a use that's going to be there for 30 years too. So it's not a short-term loose use. And what was encouraging, and it really probably shouldn't weigh on you guys', is decision whether one person shows up for the public hearing or 80 people show up. Cause really you're looking, is it a permitted use? What type of conditions can we put on this? What conditions have we put on similar uses? What did we learn? What do we want to change? And this is a fairly easy one, he's just personal use. So that should be an easier, easier one than an actual commercial operation.
I guess that's what I guess I'm trying to say, Ken, for what he's doing, it is very simple.
Yeah.
And put it take eight to 10 weeks or whatever it would take or break grounds a long time.
Some of it is out of our control because we, it's the notification for sidewalks and public hearings. So a lot of it's out of our control.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, we get delayed, we know what's, we need 10 days, what, to publish for a sidewalk and for a public hearing? So depending on when in the month that happens, we may not be able to get them in the next meeting. So we have no control over that.
And it's definitely encouraging that the direct abut across the street, the direct abut to the side and the other side none of them showed up to the public hearing, so.
Like there wasn't any, would be concerning.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So getting back to these applications, Ken, do you see any real reason to have a sketch plan application?
Well, we need to know what to call the person, the map and law, the information whose, that comes with that as well too, and.
You can put all that underneath the preliminary plan.
Well, now we just skip the sketch. And once it's preliminary, I need to notify all the abutters, direct abutters, that we've received an application. We've always done it and the, and the planning board's been, been able to work very casual and working within a butter as long, working with the developer. As long as the developer is agreeing with the timeframe the town has, we've never had an issue with it. We've never notified anybody until the final plan and public hearing. Now we're looking at the ordinance, we're supposed to notify a preliminary that we've received the application. So at that time, our phone rings off the hook that, you know.
The sketch plan, this is not supposed to notify.
I think it's preliminary. I thought it was sketch two, but I think it's preliminary.
Okay, I thought that was one of the, potentially, yeah, Ken.
I even think it should have to be preliminary also, I mean, the sketch plan can change.
It will preliminary change dramatically too, but, yeah.
I mean, so then you, you notify the abutters and something that is, it's like throwing a dart at a moving target.
Exactly, yeah. It's going to still be moving until we get to final, but.
We still, you know, I think the sketch plan should, should be there first.
Yeah.
And notify them on the preliminary. Because at least then we've solidified a lot of what we're looking at.
We've got, it's, so sketch plan can be on a napkin, doesn't need to be professionally drawn, can just be basically what it is, coming in, getting a feel for the board and what the board thinks. Then when we get to preliminary, that's stepped up a little bit. We've got some engineered plans, we're taking a look at it. And we've kind of brought everything from our checklist into the application as well. So nobody's going to miss the north arrow, the signature block, simple things like that. And then it really spells out the waivers, what they're going to be looking for waivers or.
Ken, do we have any sort of a document or a checklist as far as our timeframes, our mandatory timeframes as far as, you know, we, we get the preliminary in and we accept that, we have so many, so many days to notify the abutters, whatever, and then, you know, just a checklist as far as, you know, what we need to do and not.
And what to do, so we've had the little subdivision regulation book that we had and we moved a bunch of checklists into that other book we made up. But we've also brought that all into the application because we don't want the developer to miss anything and then we miss it, now we've both missed it. So if we can put it right on there, whether it's the contours we're looking for on the designs, the footprints of the buildings being all flagged out.
I'm looking at, I'm thinking of just a checklist of timeframes.
Yeah, yeah, so that.
Just specifically not, you know, not what you need to do, but, you know, you put in your preliminary, abutters are notified.
Yeah.
You have, you know, there's, the town has so many days to do this, the applicant has so many days to do that. And then just a checklist of times, so we know.
What's ticking.
Right.
And, and I'm thinking if it's, as the application flows, we'll be checking off everything down and you'll come right to, like on sketch plan 5.3, nine copies of the sketch plan, supporting materials have been submitted 10 days prior to the meeting. That's something we've been casual about too, but, you know, holding to it more and more.
But I think, I think we should look at developing something like that so we don't And then that would also let the applicant and anyone who wants to ask, you know, what kind of, when, when everything might be buttoned up.
Well, most of it's on the applicant's ability to, whatever you ask on. So their information's 10 days prior to the next meeting. So if there are 14-day cycles between meetings and you ask them, instead of 10-foot counters, we want two-foot counters, that gives them four days to have their engineers go out, do the work, come back and submit it and be ready for the next meeting. So that's, that's not going to happen, so it could be a.
Are there any ramifications if the town misses a date?
At the end of it, and let's just say you approved something and it wasn't something that you could have approved, there's a 30-day window that anybody withstanding can appeal any decision you guys have done in the Superior Court. After the 30 days, then the window's closed.
I mean, it's, um.
Well, let's just say the step is, we didn't notify the road commissioner, fire chief and superintendent of schools that somebody's doing something. You know, when that step has been missed quite often, especially in the 55 and old. As we get together with the fire chief, usually the road commissioner's in the past, we're how to depend down, then maybe now, what side is it, the winter guy, the summer guy? So we'll just notify all of them at any time. Most times if it's a private road, it's a private road association that really has the impact, not any of the road commissioners, so, things like that. But that's all on the checklist that are here too. And I think as we go through, we just go through 6.1A. Yeah. B, yeah, C, wait a minute.
Are these revised, Ken?
These were just revised the other day, updated. And I think the difference there, the first thing I'd change is where it says subdivision preliminary application, that's good, that's three pages. And then the next one says review, subdivision preliminary plan application review. Maybe clean that up to just checklist. That's a checklist for us to follow as well as the applicant. And that's where your timeframes are all going to start coming up. Like 6.1D is the receipt. We've got three days to get a receipt out and that's dated, abutters have been notified of the application and quotient of the subdivision, municipal boundaries. So that gives us three days to get out our abutters notices in the, in the application.
And that's not a lot of time, depending on what.
That's Friday, regularly Friday and Tuesday for us, but.
It, I'm going back on these notices, Ken, the abutters notices. The lawyer for Gredees said we were in violation because he had sent out the notices.
For preliminary plan. We were still in sketch plan, so we didn't need to notify anybody yet. We did notify everyone within 500 feet. The subdivision regs actually say direct abutters, conditional uses in site plan are 500 feet. That just got put on the old application for, you know, clerical error on that, putting that on. That's not on the newer applications, but again, this applicant, everybody within 500 feet already knew about the project, so that wasn't the biggest deal. So those have all been notified of that.
Is there any need really to send out more than one notification?
And preliminary plan is just the one. So that, and it somewhat makes sense at preliminary plan, if I have a concern of something going in my neighborhood, I can get involved at the preliminary application time. But in reality, you're not speaking as the public until you get to public hearing. So what involvement do you have except for directly contacting the developer or the person with a conditional use directly and taking care of those face-to-face? Weeding it out before you get here.
You, it would eliminate a lot of the misinformation.
Oh, you, I think people thrive on the misinformation and want the misinformation. But with, with still that preliminary application, always has a sketch and we've sat there for 30 minutes and thrown some ideas out and they come back with preliminary. Now we've notified preliminary and whether the people show up at the meeting or a watch or however they, they get the information, but then they'll just, we're going to have several changes throughout preliminary. We're going to get revisions for the revisions, about the revisions, until we actually get to final. And I think the sketch plan has us going out for sidewalks. Yeah, so we're doing a sidewalk at sketch plan.
Do we do another one or no? Is that just the?
You can do as many as you need to want to.
But the, the only one that's required is a sketch.
A lot of it say may. Board may hold the public hearing, board may do a sidewalk, board may.
So it's not even, not even mandatory?
No, no.
But it's the same with the public hearing, right, Ken?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of it's may, it may.
Right. There's nothing saying you have to have one, not that.
No, but we've always had.
That would be necessary.
You know, but.
Yeah, yeah.
And the application review for the sketch, it does say date of onsite inspection is scheduled.
Yeah, yeah. So you should be able to look at 5.2C going to the subdivision regs. 5.2C, date of the, date of the onsite inspection is selected.
What was that on, Ken?
Uh, page 11 of your subdivision, 5.2C. And that was the main thing, is just to make sure it follows through. So if something is quickly condensed on the checklist, then you just go back and look at the regular book. And, you know, once we do two, three subdivisions right in a row, then we get really good at it and then three, four years, five years combined, we haven't even done a subdivision for five years and it's.
And chances are the board is different?
The board is different constantly, yeah.
You, and maybe it complicates things or maybe make it simpler, I don't know. Put reference numbers came to these.
I think they're in the application. So go to the page one of one on that.
GM review.
Yeah, it's worded review, I think that's the first thing, like I was saying, we'll change that to checklist. And then get you, like I said, 5.2C brings us right to the onsite inspection and that's on the book, the books worded too as well. Does that make sense, change that word review to checklist or something?
Cause I mean, that in reality is what you do.
You're emailing it?
Right. You go through all this stuff, though.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Like I said, we've been just able to work with the developer and be casual as long as he's not screaming timeframe or what it's taken us and we're not yelling at him for disappearing. It's work, but this we'll have to hold ourselves to a more stringent schedule.
The, the date that we go by, Ken, is not the date that the sketch plan's presented to you, is the date that the sketch plan's presented to the plan.
Correct, yeah.
That's a little bit of what.
Well, that just, yeah. And years ago, we would have the packets ready for the planning board 10 days in advance or something like that, but nobody was picking them up till the night of the meeting. So for survey, I came in with a relocation or something like that, five days ahead of time, we just put on the agenda and move it in through as well too, so. We'd still want that flexibility, somewhat uneasy and stuff. But the more complicated stuff that I'll have to go out and take a look at. But at, at sketch plan, you know, they've got the building footprints flagged, center line of the road flagged. In the middle of the field is not a bad, not that tough of a situation to do. But if we were at like Billy Plant Site the other day and that was a subdivision, it's a lot harder to flag out building envelopes or corners of the building house themselves. It's one thing to.
You wouldn't necessarily even need that depending on what you were doing.
Right.
I mean, we don't have building envelopes yet.
No, we're still in sketch, you know, we talked.
Well, even the checklist says building footprints should be, shall be flagged.
Yeah, so 5.4, we're pulling that out of 5.4.
So we're not anywhere close to that.
Exactly. So we've, we've got two things we need to do. One, fix the application so it's going to work for this. Two, go through this and pull out a bunch of stuff that, like you say, there's no reason to, cause you're having an engineer firm go out and flag the center of the road, which we're probably going to move and then flag a bunch of houses that even after the timberhoppers are done, the road's built, the subdivision's been approved and they're trying to build, they're still trying to move houses at that time too as well.
Yeah, I mean, so that's kind of.
In the middle of 100 acres, it's all forested, it's extremely hard to do. So that's a whole separate issue is going through this book and cleaning up a lot of redundant things that don't work.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Yeah, you're probably talking $4,000 to $5,000 for an 18 acre.
You know, we're not looking at building envelopes so that lot is sold and they're looking to build, I would take.
Well, we usually give an envelope of it, but this is, actually this says building footprints are flagged. So it's not even the envelope, it's the actual location of the house and we should be, you know, final for that, I would think, or at least preliminary. So there's some stuff we've got to get out of there because again, you didn't make them do that on the sketch plan. It's like, you know, oh, that would be for the site visit anyways. And in the middle of a desert or the field, that's easy to do. In the middle of the forest, they can go out with a total station. In the middle of the forest, they can go out with a total station and lay out all that stuff. There's a good chance we're not going to find any of it as we do our walk, we're just going to be on the road. And, um, most of it is intelligently looking at a map with the contours and, and finding the wetlands and the buffers and stuff at, at sketch plan. Does the use meet the comprehensive plan? Uh, how's the traffic flow coming out of there, uh, things like that of that nature. So, get a good application to flow and look at the book this winter. And by using the book, the same as the application, by using it, we'll see a lot of things. This doesn't make sense. Mark it off the application, go with the book, highlight the book. And then, uh, once we get our board back together, we can really take a look at this and add things we want to add that are going to be important for sketch that aren't asked for and get rid of stuff that makes no sense at all.
I mean, I was reading there the other day about, uh, what's? At the footpath that Downey was going to put in down to the lake. And it says in there, it cannot exceed six feet wide. In the same, same sentence, it says it can't be over 10 feet between trees, trees. Well, is it 610, it's a 6, or is it 10? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Uh, just that.
Yeah, same as, uh, and I would assume that must have been in the shoreline zone, the footpath though, so. The tree cutting ordinance has to be also put on the plan too as well. We've always just relied on state law for the ordinances. Uh, that's going to be implemented onto the plan as well too.
But now we did away with the.
Timberhogs.
Timberhogs.
But we didn't get away with removing vegetation within the shoreline zone. So two different levels. First, it just doesn't care about somebody cutting some trees, they can't, they just care about, you know, five acre, 10 acres, whatever.
Now, how do we address issues that we went into with, uh, statements written in the comp plan? That, um, like the part of the comp plan that says we should be discouraging developmental on certain roads. How do we maneuver that? I mean, they say should discourage, I don't say you can't do it.
Right, right.
But, so where do we go with that kind of language?
Yeah, so a lot of it, I will look at, um, why was it discouraged? Was it road development, did the roads need to be better? Or was it just trying to keep a rural character or what, why, how?
I would assume with the, with the, with the roads that they, they specified in the comp plan that it was.
Conditions of the roads, yeah, yeah. So over time, those roads should have been also addressed through a capital improvement program. But, you know, in 2025, we're fixing this one, 2030, we're fixing that. And the roads come up to a standard as well. Um, with the amount of trips per day, we usually, we were averaging six or seven in the 55 and older communities. And you get up to eight, nine, 10 in the non-55 year older communities. With that amount of flow, once you've got more than 200 per day out of a new road coming onto a road, that's when you're really starting to look at, um, traffic flow and issues. Uh, we need to talk to an engineer, we've got to.
But construction too.
Yeah.
We've got the big trucks, I mean, look at what's happened to Buzz and Road.
Yeah.
Buzz and Road has been added, it's, it's a whole lot worse now.
Yeah, well, always, uh, you got the opportunity to ask for onsite improvements as well too, offsite improvements, for somebody to do something for it, but.
To the town.
So I just wasn't sure how, how, how we address those kind of, uh, that kind of language because.
Yeah.
I mean, and there's nothing set in stone either, it's, it's all.
It's a guideline.
Yeah.
Yeah, which everything's built off of. The ordinance is built off of the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan needs to be up to date.
Part of our checklist says, does it, uh, does it comply with the comp plan too? I mean, so I've been, you know, trying to think of, you know, how we, how we address that. Cause it's a, it's a question we're going to have to answer at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, cause you had it done as long as you say you can't do that, cause the comp plan says you can't. I don't care what it says up. You know, this.
Yeah, it's just like, you know, comp plan, master plan, it's the base you need to have for your ordinances. Your ordinance is your ordinances. Uh, comp plan, somebody should be taking it down, looking at it and making sure we're achieving what it, what it's requesting, asking and guiding us to. And they're all living documents, they're changing every year, all the time. It's just the comp plan is the one that gets changed the least because we don't use it, even though it's the basis of everything.
I mean, this whole deal is. I've been on for every committee there is at the time. And the planning board is definitely the most complicated.
You're dealing with hundreds of thousands of dollars, no matter what you're doing, millions of dollars quite often. And you have property owner rights and you have a butters' rights. And both of them need to be taken into consideration on most of the issues. So I just wrote the date on this application because there were some other ones out there drifting around. So today's 25th. 25th, 19. So we didn't write it down unless they talked about it, but. So the color coordinate nation just breaks it out for us that we all know we're on sketch and preliminary and final, but I would imagine that the developer or his agent will just download one, print it online. And then once we get it out to you guys, it will. But if you just go down through the checklist and mark these up and. I did just get the stormwater permit back for the Milton Mills bond that just came back the other day. So that's, that's probably that thing.
Milton Mills bond?
Yeah, the wedding bond we did.
Like a couple of years ago?
Yeah, yeah, so D, we just finally get them approved now.
It seems like we could have it forever ago.
August 12th, 2015 is when they started.
Four years. Okay. In, in the, we was, one of the things that we're supposed to have is, um, to start DEP before we grant the final.
I thought that DEP, we weren't contingent on DEP.
Are you ready to hear some?
I'm sorry.
We are supposed to?
Um, I think that was on final.
Yeah, on final, right, before we prove the final plan.
Army Corps of Engineers.
Why did I think that it wasn't that?
Required approvals have been obtained in writing where applicable, so 71C. 1, 2, 3.
All right, I stand corrected.
So prior to submitting a final plan application, the following approvals shall be obtained in writing. So that's at preliminary, they've got all their approvals. So last I was talking with the DEP, they wanted the town to give approvals of what the town wanted. Then the state can look at the final plan. They didn't want just the opposite of the state approves it, comes back to the town and then, because we're local, we know more about it. Uh, the state probably hasn't even done a sightwalk on it. And we may change everything around, even if it's just, um, changing the road bases and things like that.
So this is catch 22 then?
Uh, a lot of it is. And that's where, that's where you want to use common sense and, you know, is common sense going to get us in trouble or?
Well, the common sense will tell you again, just by what you've just said. I mean, the EP just got this one back there from 2015. That's four years.
That could have been the applicant also taking time and understanding the process. Uh, the engineer firm, he used Walsh Engineering, that's a good sized firm with knowledgeable people that have done a lot of this. Uh, July 26, 19 is when the DEP started the review on that. But it starts with, um, it's been 2015.
So have they done any construction at all?
Yeah, the, the bond's built and the roadway into it. Is the roof on? I don't know if the roof's on.
I'm just saying, just things like that.
Yeah, DEP may be referencing some laws for the 2015 as well too. Versus when they actually started this middle process. Cause I got it in June of 2019. But we had it well before that. When we, like you said, it was a couple of years ago, we did the process through them.
If it was, if it was 2015.
Yeah, they, they did their public notices in July. The application fee was $1,500 for the stormwater for this one.
I guess that's the things Leslie that, you know, read through the floor that just doesn't make any sense.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Like I said, I mean, it's, I thought the PM, DEP wanted us to finish before they finish.
And like you're saying, like Ken said, this word will could be very true. But that isn't how it moves. What we do isn't, I, I don't think anyways, will have a fact what the DEP's decision is on what needs to be done or can't be done or whatever. And obviously.
I would think we, we would best, we would best tell them how to implement what we want done.
Well, I would like to. That's what we have. But there's, there's a lot of that stuff in here that it just doesn't work.
And some of the stuff you'll use once out of 100 applications in your plan, it's there. But the other 99 times, it was something we had to try to use common sense and ignore.
I mean, like you said, Ken, with this last subdivision, we've been doing it the same way for 22 years. And all of a sudden, we're not supposed to do it like that.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And this is a planning board issue. I mean, it's your issue too, but it's really a planning board issue if things aren't, the planning board isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing.
But what did we make a mistake on? It was the notifications, right?
Hmm, if we did make a mistake, it's because we did notify. Cause we weren't supposed to notify until preliminary, we notified at sketch. Because of the pressure from the public hearing, Joey said, well, let's just send the notifications out, which in reality was wrong.
But, I mean, it's.
Over notification is better than under.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it, you know, the transparency is, is a, is a good thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, especially with, with a project that is controversial.
Yeah, yeah. And most of them are controversial to somebody. Maybe it's one person, maybe it's 200, you know, somebody's not going to like something going on.
So what you're suggesting, Ken, be, you just go through those subdivision book?
Use the application, it's going to be a good checklist for us and them as well. And maybe in this case, we'll, um, I've talked to the developer over this. The only real change on that application is we're removing that 500 foot notification. We've already notified those people and if we have to, we'll notify them again if that feels like the thing to do. Just so somebody doesn't think we're changing the rules to benefit one side or the other. We'll try to, um, use that old application and the new one. And then we just go down through this checklist, but, uh, you know, section by section, line by line, check it, check it, check it. So most of the stuff was done prior to the board meeting, a lot of the stuff was. Uh, this time, I haven't even had a chance to look at that application. So we'll have to do it right during the board meeting probably and just grab the application. You can, we're at sketch plan. Uh, and that's probably what confused the attorney for the other side a little bit is we had great plans for sketch plans and they were supposed to be napkin drawings, but, you know, at that time we had good plans, good contours. But again, I, I've been dealing with them for four plus years, five years or so now, working on, well, we had the buzzer roadside first, which they had all the data for this side from that side already. So we had all that information, they just put it on their plans, so.
Right, listen, what would be wrong?
Yeah, yeah, what the board has, has asked in the past.
So what are you looking at, Ken, these, um, these checklists?
The checklists are easy for us to just start using, that's not a big deal. The application, I wish I had two or three other board members here and say, yeah, let's start using that application now too. Yeah, um, mainly to really clarify, are we at sketch, are we at preliminary, or are we at, you know, have we done everything on sketch? Okay, preliminary next time.
I guess that's what I'm asking. Um, next week.
Yeah.
Do you want the board to take a vote on using the newer?
We could.
Applications that we're there.
Well, the only way to find what's not working on that application is to use it.
Right.
Yeah, so.
But do we want to ask the other board members to vote on something they haven't had time to review?
Most of them have been given a copy of this. We did that last meeting or meeting before, I can't remember which one. But we've changed it a few times since, just trying to find the, um, errors. Most of it was just making sure 5.2C, worked with that. There were some things that were flip flopped in the book, we kept it. You know, there's a lot of backwards things on that because that's just how the book flows, so we kept it with that. Uh, I think everyone's got a copy of that.
Well, I think, I mean, we just had some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and if we start using the revised application.
Yeah.
We'll find out what's working and what doesn't during that.
So I think in the pending subdivision we have in front of us, we'll use both applications. He submitted the old application, we'll give him the new one. So we know we're on sketch plan, then when we move to preliminary, we're away from that old application now and we'll start using the, the new ones.
And that people have time to look at.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because he submitted his application, which I gave you guys with the old application.
Sure.
Yeah.
You have no sense in changing that.
Yeah.
And then that way, I mean, that way we've, uh, we've covered all our bases and.
Transition away from one to another.
And if somebody looks at these, Leslie, whether it's the final plan or the new plan, um, after we decide to use them, there's nothing saying they can't come back to the board and say, this is an issue or I'd like to change this spot.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, definitely.
But I mean, it's, I mean, it's just, just the thought of, you know, like again, transparency, having, having people vote on something that they haven't had an opportunity to review and, and think about it. Cause I don't like to vote on things, um.
You don't like to jump in with two people?
No, not that.
And see if you can beat back all them up.
Not something like this. Other things maybe. Other things maybe.
So, and I, and I think it seems like a major thing, cause we change it, oh, change it's the application and putting more information on it. Um, changing things in the subdivision book, that's gonna be, that'll be major.
Yeah.
And hopefully that'll be a great January, February, March thing and just look, especially once we go through this one here, the redundancy of the things that don't make sense at sketch plan. And, and getting rid of a bunch of that. Or seeing that it's not at preliminary, it's only at sketch, let's move it.
Now, do you anticipate another big, big one coming in with same, um, potential issues anytime soon?
I've got several large pieces that people are looking at. Yeah, one on vault, another one on Great East. Um, the others are inland too that, uh, and it's sometimes people come in and I don't see them for five more years. Other times their engineer has their documentation and they want to get on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, because I mean, I'd like to see, um, you know, I'd like, like to see us have an opportunity to address these, these things that we've learned in the past couple of months.
In the subdivision, right? I don't see us touching that until January, February.
Okay.
So, and usually the board would waive this, you know, if it was written down as waiver, of course, we'd just waive it. And it seems like there's, um, a limited amount of things we could waive. You know, contour lines, things like that versus, um, building envelopes flagged at sketch plan in a, in a meeting and a site walk within thirty days of taking this sketch plan application. And that's a small window for sketch. And a lot of times sketch plans, they don't come back for thirty, forty days. And we've always worked, if they're not coming back, they're not hounding us, we're not hounding them. But you don't want them to be abandoned either, such as the, uh, when there was a health issue with somebody and they disappeared for a year. Then they came back and we kind of start it all over again, so. Work in progress. Do you have MMA conference next week?
Yes. Are you going there?
Uh, I don't think I've booked that yet.
Yeah, so that would be very interesting, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah.
And, um, see what other towns are doing, um.
Even to just get face-to-face to know people and this and that and grab cards.
The networking is invaluable.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm very much looking forward to that and I appreciate you, um, giving me and Joyce the opportunity to go.
Yeah, we put it in the budget for training, so we weren't financed that approved and there was a significant jump in our training line. Uh, because in the past, my zoning and planning board didn't go to much training. Now, in, in every year, just one person drops, one person comes in and now all of a sudden, um, I had, we have an aggressive board that wants to go to training. It used to just be the MMA workshops, which was the same workshop over and over and over again. Um, and now there are some more planning and training that's out there too for everybody, cause, um, all of it. You want to get it right the first time, so there isn't a court decision. And any of your decisions that get appealed to Superior Court, the judge isn't going to say, they said it was black, it's white, it's white. The judge is going to say, no, I think there was an error and kick it back to you guys for a read, to, to look at it again. They're not gonna make a decision for you. They don't kick it back and tell you to re-look at it, re-notice it, put another hearing or do whatever we, we missed and just do it again, so.
So, well, hopefully, you know, with, with some of us, you know, have, you know, having the opportunity to get the training, then we won't have those things happening. Or, you know, reduce the likelihood of it.
Well, a lot of it too is all of a sudden, um, you know, Tammy Kittery versus Jones, or some court case comes up and it just flips everything we've, we've, we've learned in the pie, you know, say you were going to that conference every year for twenty years and now there's a court case that just changed everything we've ever been taught and learned, uh, you know, there's a, there's a decision and now it's just nothing like we thought it was.
So it will be, it'll be, um, interesting.
Yeah.
And educational and, um, yeah, and I know Joyce is looking forward to it also.
Yeah.
If, did I read somewhere in the again that if there's a gray area?
That goes to the homeowner?
Yeah, it goes to the application.
Uh, that is how I'm taught at the state level. If, if it's close, always goes to the homeowner, cause that's how the, the property owner, that's how the judge is going to look at it. He's gonna, with the property rights are coming to.
Property owners have, have, do have rights. I mean, our job is to if, you know, enforce the ordinances. And, and I read somewhere, and I wrote it down because it, it struck me at the time and I forget where I found it. But it said that personal bias should never enter into our decision, it should always be, what did the ordinance say? And just because we don't like something doesn't mean that we should vote against it. If the ordinance allow it, we should be voting for it.
And quite often we'll hear, it's very clear in the ordinance. Nothing clear in that ordinance, it may seem to be clear, but you can usually find something to contradict it or change it or, or, or look at it differently too.
Well, it's very clear if it meets your belief and that's what power should be.
Yeah.
It's very clear.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's as clear as mud.
Well, if I had written the thing, everybody'd be understanding, cause it wouldn't be a word that had a full.
It was very, very few words, I mean, lots of pitches.
Lawyers wouldn't have that hold of it.
Yeah.
Well, that's the problem, there's people don't speak totally. You know, you get, you get into the legalities and, uh.
Oh, and, and quite often in the past, the board would be convinced to, if we're putting it somewheres in the ordinance, we need to put it here, here, here and here. Now it's in five places in the ordinance and then three or four years later, we go to change it, we changed it in three places, we forgot about the other two. Now we have contradictions all through it, so keeping it as simple as possible is best, in my opinion. And put it in one spot and that's all we have to do to maintain it. All right, so I'll continue to use, uh, the application, um.
So we'll see if you want to change that one Thursday night, Ken?
Yeah.
Moving forward.
And I'll get, uh, I'll change the review to checklist, so that sticks out a little bit, uh.
Yeah.
And staple them up into smaller packs too, so.
How far is Bangor from here?
Oh, geez.
Pretty tall.
Is it? Cause I want to make sure that we're back in time.
I thought it was like a hundred fifty miles or something, Ken?
No. Hundred thirty-eight.
Hundred thirty-eight?
Well, considering it's been over forty years.
Two forty-seven, I was thinking three, three twenty, so two forty-seven. I usually stay right on ninety-five, it's three minutes longer versus getting on the two ninety-five and running the coastline up.
It'll depend on what time I leave at, during the day.
Yeah.
Cause I know that, um, when I went to Augusta, it was, um, quicker to go up two ninety-five because of the time of day I left.
Yeah. There's three speed traps now between here and there.
Okay, good to know.
You really gotta be speeding to get stopped on the paint turn bike.
What is it, seventy all the way, isn't it?
Uh, quite a bit of it.
It's way too fast.
What?
Seventy.
Seventy?
Oh, it's way too fast right now. I had trouble getting over fifty-five on that one.
No, sir. I don't know who's driving yet, whether it's me or Joyce. I usually end up driving whenever we go anywhere.
These are working Bangor.
I've never been there.
It's a lot of years ago.
Well, I've never been there far enough.
And it's time to take a picture there, little ball on it.
About three hours, okay.
So that's not too bad.
Yeah.
See, it gets exactly the way it says, four hours.
For you.
Well, I was driving.
But if it was Bob, it would take two. You still want to make sure we're back in time for that meeting, Ken?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was just doing the calculations and I think it's Ice Cream Social's the last part, isn't it?
Um, I think the, the last event is over at three thirty. And we've got to check out of the hotel in the morning, so we won't have to go back to the hotel, just have everything in the car.
Ready to go.
Get back for what time?
Plan board.
The plan board, yeah.
The same day?
The same, yeah, well, the, the second day is, yeah.
Oh, it's two days?
It's two days, yeah.
Oh, wait, oh, wait.
A lot of learning in two days, guys.
I couldn't take it all then, Ken.
Yeah.
No, I didn't know it was two days.
Yeah, it's two days, yeah, we're going up, um, Tuesday. Thank goodness for, it's probably great at hotels. It's only costing us two hundred bucks for two night, two rooms for two nights.
That's cheap.
Ryan, at least run up there, some concerts on this, on Bangor's stage.
All right, so I'm throwing away my older applications, the first couple of drafts. Um, I put the date on this one, probably the next one will have the date right on the bottom of the application. Something jumps out to you guys, screen?
I'll, um, take a look at it over the weekend and we can go from there.
Awesome. Shows how it's mixed in with everything. That's all I have unless you guys had anything else.
No.
Now, the other question I had had, I already asked Ken, that was about the, um, addressing the language in the law. And how we.
You gotta write that down and ask that at the conference.
That's true. I have, I have a number of questions that I, I want to talk to them about. Should put that in my, right in my phone. Is this the end of the workshop?
I'm waiting to see somebody flex. You guys want us out? I had a little bit.
Excuse me, will we have an opportunity to?
Did you have a, a minute?
Speak to him.
We usually don't have public comment and if it's up to these two.
Oh, we were told to come to the workshop for this kind of conversation.
Usually I have this award here too, I mean, you just got a better time.
Do you, uh, do you mind if they speak?
Should I have it on camera or no? I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right, you may speak.
Thank you. It'll take much of your time.
No, it's fine.
Normally, it's just, you know, it's.
Yeah, we also, I mean, if we, there's not a warrant, so we can't make a decision, so.
Understood, understood, and when we're here in February, I believe it was Joyce who suggested we come to the workshop to discuss our, you know, concerns regarding agriculture, what is, uh, what's on board this. And I guess my first question is, um, one other thing that Joyce said was they were waiting for a decision on the case that was pending regarding their cake street issue and I don't know if you're aware, but the case was dismissed as the homeowner who had the agriculture has shut down the operation, so we're not going to get a decision from the judge to even, as Ken said, bring us back and come on zoning board. So, um, the question is, is it something that you are going to be considering, have been considering, or, you know?
So that it doesn't happen again?
To, yeah, look at the ordinance to tighten it up a little bit, so that this doesn't happen to us or anyone else.
Yeah, the way the ordinance is written out, it's already, it could be.
It could, yeah, there's a little area.
Right, so we were looking to tighten that up a little tighter, so it can't have a commercial use, you can't have.
Or non-commercial use.
Non-commercial use.
To follow some, some rules that protect a butters.
I understand completely. But it, it goes into a, another realm within the town. Because, um, in the shoreline district, in the resource protection, there isn't, there is differences. But the resource protection is either the straight or everything in the shoreline district, which you can do on this. So if you, if you do this, um, ordinance to prohibit, um, farming animals basically in, in where the shoreline district.
I think it was a simple change of the, the wording really.
But, but the problem is, you're affecting a lot of places in town, which you really can't. For example, I live on the same border. I don't now, but I have for years and years, uh, had farming animals. If you, if you prohibit stuff like this in the shoreline district, which I'm in, uh, then with the setbacks, then I wouldn't be able to do that. And reality, I've never caused any detriment to the shorefront because of it, you know what I mean? I've always kept my stuff, stuff back, but not to the point where you, you would be looking for, uh, with a lakefront property, you know, you understand what I'm saying?
I, I do and, and understand, we weren't suggesting prohibiting agriculture in, in.
But I don't know how you, I don't know how you would, make it different, I guess.
I, I think our biggest issue was that it seemed to be no enforcement of our drinking water in particular. Um, you know, all of the rules for manure ordinance, nutrient management of farms seems to indicate at least a hundred foot setback between, you know, someone existing having a well and those creatures, whatever.
But do you limit the number?
There was no limit on the number.
No, absolutely.
Now, are you advocating limiting the number? I mean, what, what, what are you?
I'm advocating enforce the number, um, uh, you know, if it's a hundred feet, make it a hundred feet at least from my well, um.
Cause they were literally twenty, twenty feet from our.
I mean, and then, and then we're, we're understanding, you know, completely what, what you're saying. I, I understand what Ben is saying, and I, I live in the shoreline zone also, so, um, I certainly wouldn't want.
Yeah, I would say if it meets the setbacks, which, you know, he met some of the setbacks, but just not the one.
So I mean, but you have to address the fact that, you know, like, suppose my neighbor wanted to have a couple of chickens, would they be allowed to have a couple of chickens?
Well, that's where you have variance.
Yeah.
I shouldn't have to ask for variance to maintain a minimum setback from manure to my water. Um, that, that's kind of what I, we're, we're looking at is, I understand people can interpret things different ways, but I think, you know, regardless, if you have one, I think you used an elephant. If you have one elephant versus one chicken, is there a difference? I don't know, and that would be up to, to you folks or someone else to decide on a variance. But if there is a setback, make it clear that it needs to be enforced to protect a butters, that's really what we're asking.
What we can do is, is, and I'll let Joyce know and bring it to the board and, and, and perhaps have that conversation as to if the ordinance needs to be changed, modified.
Yeah. And that's what she suggested, we come here and do that.
I mean, it's, um.
That's what we're asking, it's, it's, um, a moot issue at the moment for our property, but if it becomes an issue again, I would equal us all in the same place and.
Well, we really well could and a big problem you have, especially around lakes, there's, there's a lot of fifty and hundred foot lots. Uh, that's all they are. And And it's hard even to get us out of the system a hundred feet from your neighbor's well.
And we had to look at that as well, that we had to move our well somewhere, where could we move it to?
And this is what I was talking to, um, Ani Mattel, was the reason why I'm so, asking so many questions and clarifications is because hopefully we've learned from our mistakes that we made in the past. And if we knew we now, we wouldn't have fifty-foot lots on the lake.
Certainly.
I know, but we, we have a ton, we have a ton of them now, and, and they're not going away, um.
But how do you, how do you differentiate between if I'm living there and I say, I want a pot-bellied pig for a pet, my kids, or three roosters, or?
Or even, what's the difference between a pot-bellied pig as a pet and a pig that you're gonna use for me? What's the difference, no?
I don't know.
What differences?
I guess this is where I'm.
A lot of, a lot of, um, really thorny questions that, um.
They are, and, and is this the place that we start talking about them? I, I guess is our concern, and, and again, I know you're focused on the lakefront, and I acknowledge that's where we're living, um, but I would say the same thing whether you're on a third of an acre or three acres. If my neighbor puts in a barnyard thirty feet from my well, is that really appropriate? Regardless of whether it's a tiny lakefront or.
Well, neighbors make good friends.
What's that?
I said, good neighbors make good friends, well, we've all had neighbors that weren't, weren't considered good neighbors.
Right, and again, I, I don't disagree in, you know, our situation, you know, limited to one, you're limited to sixteen. You have sixteen goats on this tiny little section, and, and how many chickens, though?
No, no, I, I appreciate what you.
I, I'm not, I'm not trying to sit here today and tell you, here's my, here's what I want, and here's the guideline I want set. I don't have the answers, I'm asking to talk about it, to see if we can come up with something that might hopefully prevent this from happening to, to me again, or you, or anybody else in, in town.
I would think, I would think, with the planning board.
Planning board, we, we're the ones that, that actually
Right, the change.
Write the ordinances to go to town meeting.
So I would think, is.
So, I mean, it's, I think the conversation would start here.
Right, right, and then Joyce said you were bringing to a selectman where they could vote on it, or?
No, the selectmen will vote at town meetings. Yes, selectmen would have nothing to, um, nothing to do with voting on that, other than as a, as a citizen.
Yeah, right.
Are you guys living here all the time?
No, no.
So my mom's here, my mom's here, but.
So you could even vote on the ordinance.
My mom is, it's her primary residence, so.
But I, no, I was just thinking about, could Joyce put them on the agenda at some point?
Why not?
We are homeowners.
The taxpayers.
Yeah.
We're all homeowners, yeah, it's not.
No, no, I, I mean, it's so the planning board could have the conversation.
I don't see why she couldn't, I mean, it's, non-residents are still taxpayers.
No, no, I agree with that, I just, normally we don't address ordinances unless it's something that's.
If it's something, if something that can be, could be a problem, then yeah, we do address them, we have in the past, too. It's like, this could cause a problem, let's look at it and, and have the conversation, so it's.
But I guess most of the problems we've come up with are problems we found ourselves. There's usually pieces.
So now, now we, now we have a taxpayer bringing us a potential problem, or a problem that actually existed at one point, and that could exist again, you know? Uh, I think that doing our due diligence would be to discuss it and see what direction the board would want to go, whether we change the ordinance, modify it, do nothing. But we don't know that until we have that conversation.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
So that would be more to go to a planning board meeting than to the workshop?
And, um, let Joyce, and let Joyce know that you'd like to speak to that.
Okay.
You'd like to be on the agenda for the meeting.
Okay.
Could normally, unless there's an applicant for something, normally the conversation is just, we're board members, we don't, we don't have a public comment section.
Right.
But if you ask, kind of.
We did, we followed that procedure back in February to be here, so.
And, and I'm sure Joyce will, will do it in the, in.
Especially during our slower periods where.
Now, is it, is it a good time or okay?
Yeah, with, with the subdivision that we've had, you know, come up, you know, our, our agenda has been very, very full.
Sure, okay.
Um, winter, we tend to be a little slower, so we can, um, you know, but, like I said, you know, Joyce is the chair, so she's the one that, that will make those decisions as to when and, and all of those, um.
And you work out with her, you know, what's convenient for you people to, you know, maybe some.
Yeah, because she heard us come here, so she's aware.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, she couldn't be here today, um, so.
Understood.
Normally she is.
All right, great, we'll, we'll be seeing you soon.
Exactly, I get ahold of Joyce and.
We will.
You guys have her contact?
Yep.
We can get.
Yeah, so just, you know, should have any, you know, whatever, and, and, you know, let her know that, you know, that you did speak to us today.
Okay.
And, um, that we suggested that you ask to go on the agenda when
Okay.
When she, when she wants.
Can you?
Great, thank you both.
All right, appreciate your time, thank you very much, we'll see you soon.
You're done. Yeah, you can watch out.
Yeah, watch out those poles.
We don't get much company, so we never thought saw the evening.
Have a good night.
You too.
Have a good night, thank you.
You too.